I thought it would be dangerous.
It is champion, champion.
People would start.
I could have said he would be a attorney.
Around the air.
It is now six thirty and I will call to order the November ninth, two thousand and fifteen, Burnsville Planning Commission. Commissioners, thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate everyone's attendance, staff. Thank you very much. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of our agenda. Commissioners, do you have any changes to the posted agenda?
I do, Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Venky.
Under item five, Commissioner Singh's name is misspelled at the beginning of.
We're adopting the current agenda.
Sorry.
So, do, uh, any, uh, any changes to this evening's posted agenda? So, staff?
Nope, nothing staff.
For that, I would stand for a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Singh.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay, and the motion carries. The second item on this evening's agenda is approval of the September twenty eighth, two thousand and fifteen meeting. Seems like it was several months ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I just had the one.
Okay, I'll let you go ahead. What was your, what was your change? I'm sorry.
Under item five, under the move for the motion, Commissioner Singh's name is misspelled.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Venky. Any other changes to the minutes? Then I would stand for a motion with the posted changes. So, moved by Commissioner Venky.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you. Third item this evening is a public hearing. It's an application for I-Metro Property Dyna LLC for a planned unit development PUD amendment for building and site improvements to Town and Country Center at nineteen hundred Highway thirteen east. And Ms. Garros, you are presenting this evening. I guess you're presenting on every single item, unless Brian's gonna step up.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'll have a few comments, though.
Ms. Garros, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners and members of the audience. We do have a public hearing for this application. It is to consider a planned unit development amendment for the Town and Country Shopping Center. What they are proposing are a number of site and building improvements at the property, and they need some PUD deviations, for the most part, because of the existing nature of the shopping center. But those are outlined in the report. And the subject site is the shopping center. It's bounded on the north by Cliff Road, on the south by Highway thirteen, and on the west by River Ridge. On the pictometry above, this gives an overview of the site. Just want to draw your attention to a couple of items, because we'll be discussing these parts of the property. The area to the south that has the white, um, the white tent-type structure, that's actually a hoop house. And this area of the site has pervious pavers included in it, and has traditionally been used each summer for the landscape and plant sales operation. So we'll be discussing some proposed modifications to that part of the site. The area along or between the Town and Center Shopping Center to the west and to River Ridge is the west parking area that we'll be referring to, as there are some proposed changes in that area of the site. And the southern part of the property, where the former Millen Textiles was located, that's really where the extent of the building improvements that are involved with this project are proposed to take place. This is a, giving an overview, just for the public and the planning commission. The Millen Textiles tenant bay has been vacant for some number of time. What the applicant would like to do is to modify this tenant bay to divide it into four different tenant bays, and then do some additional site improvements. This would be the most southern side. On the south side, there are going to be changes within the parking lot, including that pervious paver area that I previously discussed. Also looking at narrowing this drive to twenty-four feet and creating storefronts on the south side of the building, and there will be some sidewalk improvements and things that are proposed on that side. And this is the west side of the building, where the proposal is for Jimmy John's to take the most westerly tenant space. And some of the items that we'll be discussing are the current overhead door. This is the current loading location on the site for that Millen Textiles property. And then, um, there is a, uh, an area that is painted on the parking lot for no parking on this location, and then also directly right across from this. So there are about three or four parking spaces that are currently indicated for no parking because of the former loading zone area. In the, um, the screenshot does show that a proposed Jimmy John's is to be located in the most westerly tenant space. Jimmy John's is looking to relocate from the existing freestanding multi-tenant building where they're located now on the east part of the site, or east of the shopping center. But they're looking to relocate it to this location, and some of the improvements include creating a one-way drive lane in that west parking lot, and to install a drive-up window, pickup window area for Jimmy John's. The other three tenant bays do not have any proposed tenants identified at this point in time. The subject site, Town and Country Shopping Center, was built in nineteen seventy-one. There was a conditional use permit way back when that was issued for the shopping center. It was initially built, I believe, as Sue Trail Shopping Center, and has multiple planned unit development amendments and conditional use permits over that thirty, forty-year period for various improvements for the site. In nineteen eighty-nine, that was the most recent amendment that really dealt with the shopping center building itself and site. There was a rezoning that took place to change the site zoning from B-two to B-three, which is general business, and planned unit development. And what this rezoning did at the time is it really made a lot of the existing non-conforming aspects of the shopping center conforming to what the city's ordinance was at that particular period of time. There have been several other PUD amendments that have taken place. The most recent one, and the one that the planning commission may be most familiar with, is in two thousand and eleven, there was a new, the property was platted, and a new tenant space was created for Tires Plus, which is located on the southeast part of the site in this area. Tires Plus is part of the overall Town and Country planned unit development, as is this vacant lot on the northwest corner. However, it is owned separately from the shopping center. So there is a separate owner for the Tires Plus site. For the planned unit development, the, there are a number of items that the city looks at. For planned unit developments, we look at what are benefits to the planned unit development, and then what are the deviations that are needed to accomplish the, what the applicant is requesting. In terms of PUD benefits, those are highlighted in the staff report on page five. Basically, the proposal will upgrade the southern part of the shopping center, make it much more attractive when viewed from Highway thirteen, make it much more functional because you'll have additional tenant spaces that you can see based on the window coverage, and it will be a very nice update to the shopping center. This long vacant tenant space will be able to be used for what current customers and current businesses seek in their building locations. And the overall green space for this development, the overall green space, the building perimeter green space, and the green space within the parking lot will all be improved above the current conditions, and in some cases above the minimum ordinance requirements as a result of the application. The deviations, those are elements of the ordinance where the site plan does not meet the current ordinance standards, and what we do is to call those out. A lot of the deviations for this project and others, when we're dealing with a building that was constructed so long ago, we identify what the deviations are so that they basically are memorialized as part of the planned unit development, and then everybody knows from now on that these elements are part of the PUD or the actual zoning district for the shopping center. The deviations are, number one, there are three pedestrian crossings that we will look at momentarily, and those are proposed to be painted on the surface of the existing parking lot. For this planned unit development, when the Tires Plus project was approved, there was a PUD agreement and a condition added that the second lift for the entire parking lot would be installed by August of two thousand and nineteen. What staff is recommending for this deviation, or what the applicant is requesting, is to allow the new crossings to be painted at this point in time, and then staff is recommending that they be installed per the ordinance standards by using a different type of material other than the blacktop asphalt at the time that the other second lift is done in two thousand and nineteen. There is another deviation, and that is to allow the loading area that I recently referenced, the current loading area for the Millen Textiles, to be removed. The applicant does not believe that there's a need for another loading dock area based on what they currently have for uses at the site and what they anticipate. There's another deviation that's proposed. There are two new landscape islands that will be proposed south of the shopping center area, and those are proposed to be smaller than the one hundred and eighty-square-foot minimum standard. And the reason be, is because this really is associated with the existing parking lot use and what's available in order to provide the needed space for drivelines, et cetera. There are a couple of deviations related to signage with the proposal. One is to allow a deviation for the freestanding pylon sign for the shopping center. That's the sign that's located behind Tires Plus, adjacent to Highway thirteen. The applicant would like to install a thirty-two-square-foot electronic reader board, and that would bring the sign area of that sign above the hundred and seventy-five-square-foot maximum for the shopping center. They are proposing one hundred and ninety-eight square feet. There is another deviation from the sign ordinance, and this is related to the ordinance that was amended here a couple of years ago to include a requirement for a comprehensive sign plan to be submitted by the owners of multiple tenant buildings. And what that does is basically puts the onus on the building owner to identify where and what type of signage the various tenants can have as opposed to the city having to get involved in that, and that is one of the deviations that's requested. Staff does not support that particular deviation. There is another sign-related deviation. This is related to the number of signs proposed on the building, well, signs specifically. And the ordinance specifies that for a corner tenant space, you can have a maximum of two signs. There are three that are proposed on the tenant D or the most easterly tenant space, and the recommendation is that the plans be modified to go with the two signs as allowed by the ordinance. There is a deviation to the building perimeter landscape standard. In this case, we'll get into this a little bit further, but the requirement is fifty percent of the entire building needs to be landscaped. As we saw on the aerial photo, there's very little building perimeter landscaping that was not a requirement at the time that the shopping center was built. And the deviation is supported because actually there will be an increase of building perimeter landscaping as a result of this proposal. So it's something that's due to existing conditions, and they're actually improving upon the situation. There is also, there are three deviations that are needed for another part of the proposal, and that includes locating a new trash enclosure along the west lot line for the Jimmy John's use. And for that, there are deviations that are needed are, number one, a setback deviation. The setback that's required is a thirty-foot setback, and the proposal is to have a six-foot setback from that west lot line. So a setback deviation is needed for that. Also, trash enclosures are considered to be accessory structures, and the ordinance does not allow an accessory structure to be in front of a principal building. So a deviation is requested for that. And the last one is to allow the trash enclosure to be located within a platted drainage and utility easement, and that easement is parallel to the west lot line. Usually, enclosures are not allowed to be in drainage and utility easements. In this case, staff is supportive of this application, and I'll touch on that a bit in a little bit here. As far as the building materials and architecture on the wall on the other side of the council chambers, there are samples of the materials. The applicant is proposing to upgrade the Millen Center area of the shopping center to have the same materials as the existing freestanding multi-tenant building that's located to the east of this, of this site. So those materials are proposed to be replicated in this area, and they do consist of materials that do comply with the city's ordinance, a mix of glass, brick, EPAS, rock, face block. In addition, there are canvas awnings that are proposed. The awnings on the drawing show there are existing blue and orange awnings on the shopping center. Those are proposed to be replicated here, with the exception of Jimmy John's, which is proposed to have a black awning. This would be the east elevation of the subject site. As you can see, on the very right-hand side, that is the Auto Zone Building, which was remodeled a few years ago and upgraded. So the proposed elevations and building materials will complement that recent upgrade to the center. And then on the top drawing, that shows the west side of the shopping center, and there you can see there is a new pickup window for Jimmy John's that's proposed to be installed, and then also an additional storefront area that is proposed to be remodeled as well. For the next part of the project, just want to give an overview of the overall site plan. It's a little bit difficult to see because the shopping center is so large and long, but what I wanted to note for planning commissioners is, starting from the west side on the northwest corner, the applicant is proposing to make changes to this entire parking lot, to change it from a two-way with ninety-degree parking, to change it to a one- it from a two-way with 90-degree parking, to change it to a one-way where the public would enter into the north entrance of the parking lot and then be directed south. There is the Jimmy John's pickup window, so they are showing a new drive-through lane next to the building. In addition, angled parking is proposed instead of the 90-degree parking. All of the parking does meet the ordinance standards, so they are consistent with the previous PUD for the number of parking stalls, and they do also meet the size standards for parking stalls. On this particular drawing, actually, I'm going to go to the next one. This is just kind of an enlargement of the same thing. You can see on the northwest, that's where the trash enclosure is proposed to be located. It'll have the doors facing toward the building. Staff feels that this is a positive. They're also showing landscaping to be added to that area of the site. And actually, to the east on the wall, in that general vicinity is where there are a number of existing meters, and those will be painted, and the enclosure will actually help to screen part of those existing meters. In addition to that, they're proposing to build this curved curb line, and that's to help channel traffic around and then into the driveline. The driveline has about 140 feet of stacking distance, which is plenty of stacking distance, meets the ordinance requirements. And then on the south end, once you get through the pickup window, there are a couple of changes proposed again in the existing parking area to channel the, channel traffic directly out to the south, and then also adding sidewalk to the kind of southwest and then southerly part of the shopping center to accommodate those new entrances to the shopping center facility. The applicant has provided a plan that shows the parking area will be striped and will be signed for one-way direction in order to help to facilitate this new arrangement for that western parking area. The site plan shows that there are three pedestrian crossings that are proposed. One is located about midway in the west parking lot, and that is to provide a crossing from the exterior exit door of the tenant space so people can get across and access up to the trash enclosure. A second pedestrian crossing is proposed at the south end, near or almost even with the south front of the building, and that's to provide access from the existing trail and sidewalk located on, there's a trail on 13 and a sidewalk along River Ridge, and those will be directed to a pedestrian crossing at that location. In addition, there is a third pedestrian crossing that's proposed south of the tenant space D, which is that most southeasterly tenant space, and that is to provide pedestrian access between the new parking lot area, which is in that area of the pervious pavers, and the new tenant front of the building. As far as the application, the existing Jimmy John's does have some exterior seating available, and we had indicated that that should be shown on the site plan if they would want to do that again. There is a condition that we're recommending that the exterior seating area needs to meet the requirements of the ordinance. The reason that we have it shown on this site plan is that so they do not have to come back for a separate planned unit development amendment to be able to do that seating. We've talked a bit about the external loading area, and again, that is one of the deviations requested, not to have that specific loading area. The applicant has provided a truck movement plan, which shows how they can get a tractor-trailer basically into the site and around for deliveries. The applicant indicates that they don't really utilize that existing loading space and that it's more common to have deliveries made at the front of the stores, and the recommendation from staff would be that that would be something that staff could support. However, we would like to see a condition, and a condition is proposed to look for the deliveries to be made at off-peak times for those four tenant spaces. The area to the south where we have these pervious pavers, they are proposed to be striped for parking, and in addition to that, they are creating two new parking islands, and those would be on the east and west sides of the length of those parking stalls. They will be landscaped islands. They are somewhat smaller than what the ordinance standard is of 180 feet. However, a lot of this area is existing, and in order to accommodate and meet the ordinance requirements for spacing, separation, drive aisles, et cetera, the islands are shown at the size that are proposed, and they will be landscaped and irrigated. In addition to that, there is a small area just east of that pervious parking area where there'll be an adjustment to the parking lot. Some additional green space is picked up here because the, there needs to be a driveline that's created from the pervious area to the rest of the parking lot. The green space that is added to the site is in that area, in the two parking islands, and then also up where the drive aisle starts. That's where the linear landscape area and additional green space are proposed within In terms of screening for the property, the applicant has indicated on their plans that for the exterior meters, et cetera, that are on the building, and also for the rooftop equipment that's on top of this tenant space that's going to be remodeled, that those will be painted to match the building. That is a standard that the ordinance allows for buildings that are of this age to comply with that, so they will comply with the screening standards, and they are also providing the additional landscaping by the trash enclosure itself. The trash enclosure, this is a graphic of what that will look like. It will have the block on the bottom part of the structure and then brick on the top part of the structure, so it will be consistent with what's proposed for the exterior elevation treatments on the Millen Textile site. What this slide does is it just shows, it's the same graphic, it's just on the right, it's enlarged. These are some of the landscape improvements that are proposed. And in addition to the landscape areas that we've, that I've discussed, in addition to that, at the bottom of the screen on the right-hand side, you can see there's a small area. That is where the Jimmy John's Monument sign is proposed, and there's landscaping that will be added around that, too. That is a minimum requirement of the ordinance, and the project does comply with those standards for landscaping. In terms of the signage, adjacent to the building, there will be a menu board for ordering, and that's located on the site, and a picture of that is on the top right-hand side of your screen. In addition to that, we discussed the monument sign location that's proposed along Highway 13 on the south part of the site. And the monument is proposed to be designed very similar to the existing monument. The sign on the right is the existing monument sign that's just north of where Jimmy John's is at now, so the proposed sign will be designed similarly and will meet the ordinance In addition to that, this is the freestanding sign, and in the middle of the pylon on the bottom, you can see that is where the electronic reader board is proposed, and staff has no objection to the electronic reader board. The applicant feels that that's necessary to update the site for their tenants, and this is consistent with other similar types of applications. This graphic is the wall sign graphic, and in this, there is a Jimmy John's sign that's proposed on the west elevation, also on the south elevation, and then there are four additional signs shown on the south elevation and one sign on the east elevation. On the south elevation, the two easternmost doors, if you will, or parts of that, are one tenant bay. So that's where the recommendation comes in, that this is one tenant space. It is a corner lot. The ordinance allows two signs. They are proposing three. The recommendation from staff is that two signs be approved as per the ordinance. The applicant has submitted information on the lighting. The exterior of the building will have decorative lighting, very similar to what's in place on the current building to the east, and one decorative, or excuse me, one wall pack light over where the drive-up window will be located. One of the items that was not submitted that we have added as a condition would be that a photometric plan be submitted, and that would show the illumination levels of the signage, or excuse me, of the lighting, just to show that they do not exceed the maximum standards at the property line. With that, there are also engineering items, and our consultant, Brian, is here and can address engineering items related to the project if there are specific questions. One of the items that we are requesting or showing a condition for is that in the future for any other land use clearance application or permit application, that an up-to-date certificate of survey be provided. In this case, the applicant provided information based on the 2011 plat, but that does not show some of the facilities that are located just outside of the plat boundary, such as in Highway 13. It was somewhat of a challenge for our staff to be able to review aspects of the application due to that, so we just wanted to make that clear for any future applications. With that, the planning department recommends approval of the planned unit development subject to the nine conditions that are included in the staff report. We've talked about most of these, so I'll just summarize them quickly. Number one, that the incidental outdoor seating meet the ordinance standards. Number two, the plans are revised to show that the three pedestrian crossings can be painted at this point in time, but will need to meet the ordinance, that being a different type of material when, and that that be installed when the second lift is provided in 2019. Number three, that site deliveries for all four tenants be scheduled during off hours. Number four, that the applicant enter into an encroachment agreement with the city engineer to allow the trash enclosure to be located within the drainage and utility easement. Number five, that a comprehensive sign plan be submitted. Number six, that a revised sign plan be provided to reduce tenant D signage from three signs to two signs. Number seven, a photometric plan be submitted. Number eight is the up-to-date certificate of survey be submitted with any future land use applications or permits. And then number nine is a standard condition that all conditions of previously approved planning developments and conditional use permits shall remain in full force and effect. And with that, I know that the applicant is here, and I am able to stand for questions as well.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. I have just a quick question to clarify something, and then I'll... Can we talk just real briefly about signage, so I make sure I'm understanding correctly? Staff is in supportive, in support of all of the pylon signs, but only after we have a comprehensive plan submitted? Is that correct?
Yes, we'd like to have the comprehensive sign plan submitted, which includes all of the signage basically for the site, and it's a plan for the site. It doesn't mean that the existing tenants need to modify signage to be brought up to date, but it's a plan so that when applications come in in the future, we do have that on file and can issue permits in accordance with the building owner's sign plan.
Which we've done for several other...
Yes.
...developments in the city.
That's been a requirement. It's a new requirement to the ordinance within the past three or four years.
Okay. So the other, besides the signage on the building, then staff is supportive of everything, the reader board, the location of the, of the pylon sign, staff is in support of all that, once the comprehensive plan's in place, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Then I have just a quick question on the signage on the building, and to clarify the, the drawing that you have up there at the top, that is the east elevation, and I didn't quite understand this. There was one drawing we had that showed some signage on the existing brick above the glass, and then the sign kind of on the corner, and we had one that actually showed some signage on the brick. But your concern, staff's concern, is the actual front of the building, not the east side of the building, or could you clarify your concerns?
Correct. On this east elevation, this will be one tenant space, tenant D, and you can certainly have a sign over a front for the tenant space. On the south elevation, that front tenant space actually goes up to this point here. They're showing two different signs, although it's one tenant space. So what the ordinance indicates is that on a corner tenant, you can have two signs or a sign, wall sign facing each street or side of the building. In this case, there are two different signs proposed in this location, so we're, or the condition is recommending that one of these be deleted.
The tenant space D, to me, does seem large enough that it could be subdivided?
If it were subdivided, that, then they would be allowed an additional sign, but the floor plan does not show that at this point in time.
Okay. And one last question around signage. We have had some experiences, Burger Jones, main sign, corner, and then some auxiliary signage that says pizza or burger or beer or some other things. And I was under the impression in the past we had done that based on sheer square footage of sign available. So if the tenant wanted to do something here, if there was going to be the name of, let's say, a restaurant on the corner, and then they wanted to come back to us or wanted, they'd have to come back for a sign variance if they wanted to do that?
They would need to meet the ordinance. We're not proposing any deviations for the wall signage, so yes.
Okay.
Or if they were to divide that space, then the ordinance does allow to have one sign per, you know, tenant space in addition to the corners.
I was just a little confused there, so, thank you, Ms. Garros. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Garros? Mr. Levy, you've raised your hand first, so you have the floor.
I have a couple. I noticed on one of the views, I was, it's the one you've got up there now, there's gas meters on the west side. What kind of protection do they have from an, what's the word? Errant vehicle that comes by and has a problem?
Do you want to intercept?
Sure. Commissioners, there is, there is some sort of bollard protection typically around structures like this. There is an existing driveway in this location at this time. This driveline is only going from essentially a two-lane to a one-lane and narrowing, in fact, so it's really not creating a new condition under, under this proposed plan. But there, you know, there, there is things that you can do to provide rails and such, such as that around it if, if desired, but typically, if it's on a building itself, it's, it's not protected like that unless somebody requires it.
Who's the somebody that might require?
The city would. If the planning commission decided to require some sort of protection be put up around that, they could. But the private utility company itself is not gonna, not gonna require that. But the private utility company itself is not gonna, not gonna require that.
There is currently an existing sidewalk all along that west side to access the various tenants, so there is a separation via a raised sidewalk that's there currently.
Okay. I thought I heard you say that the exterior material, which we have samples of, was gonna be put across the whole building?
No.
I didn't hear that.
No, just the mill and textile tenant space.
Just the south end, alright. What happens to the garden market space that was there?
That would be up to the applicant to address that, I believe, that it wouldn't be allowed any longer because it's needed for parking.
Okay.
If they could show an area on the site, you know, where parking isn't used, you know, there may be an option to do that in another location, but they would need to, to provide that information to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Commissioners, Commissioner Workman?
I think this is great. This is right near my house. So, this is definitely an upgrade. But I do have a concern about the trash enclosure and the screening, because I will walk up and down that sidewalk from time to time. I do see that there is some plans for landscaping, but is there specific plans to completely hide that, or are we just putting in some bushes to, I guess, is there any, any more detail on the screening for, for that?
Well, the structure itself is going to be a brick, brick structure with a roof, and the plant materials are proposed around three sides of it. From a staff perspective, we thought that looking at that side, being a finished side, similar to the, what's being proposed on the southern exteriors, that that would be much more acceptable than having this back up to the building and have the public looking at the doors and, and those types of things. So it was the staff's suggestion that the building be oriented and located this way.
But there is some aesthetics to it, it's not just a bunch of, it's not a brick structure, or is it just a brick structure?
It's a, a brick structure, yes.
Alright.
Yes. And then the bottom will have, very similar to what's proposed on the building front. It's kind of hard to see in here, but this bottom area is kind of that split-faced, you know, like CMU-type block, and it's of a little bit different color, so it'll mirror, basically, what is on the, what's on the building.
So it'll have some design to it?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And then, I had one more question on the, the order board, where you would drive up and say your order. I was kind of unclear on where the location of that is on the drive-up. Do you do that at the window?
Let's see here. The order board, no, is actually going to be further back from the window. Not sure if I can actually find the
Sorry.
Site plan. No, that's okay. So it's hard to, it's hard to see in this, in this scale. They do have, have it on their sign plan. See if there's a... Believe that, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't increase the size of it, but I believe that that sign is gonna be located in this vicinity and through here.
Just pass the gas meter?
The reader board, mm-hmm.
Okay.
In that landscaped area.
And will it be the same size as the one that we saw in the presentation, the double panel?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, fairly standard.
There's room in there for that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman. Commissioner Benke, you were next.
Yep. If the reader board sign is at that part of the drive aisle, there's essentially zero stacking behind it?
Can I have the applicant address that?
When the applicant comes up, we can confirm where that's gonna be.
I've got a lot more. I notice, it seems like the, the aisle up to the drive-up window is simply painted.
That's correct.
And then there's some other islands that are painted as opposed to being curved. Wouldn't we normally be looking for curb in this area for better delineation and protection?
I'll let Mr. Hillgarden address that.
From an engineering standpoint, it's, it doesn't matter either way. I guess it would be from a planning perspective, again, if, if it's desired aesthetically, I can have it, but from an engineering standpoint, it's not necessary.
And I did also notice that, while we've changed the traffic from ninety-degree parking to essentially a driving-by at the gas meters, I do think that the motion is significantly different than somebody pulling into a parking spot. Obviously, any individual can hit the gas instead of a brake, but I do think that the cars driving by here gives, gives the gas meters a different susceptibility. And I do know that the gas company does like to have significant protection, as a matter of fact. A lot of their applications require documentation of that before they'll, and these are obviously in place already, but they may be being upgraded or something for addition, for the additional tenants and things like that.
And also, commissioners, for, for information, this is the overall plant unit development. They do need to come in for permits, and a lot of those details are looked at more closely at the permit time.
Sure.
If it's something that the commission feels that you would like to add as, as conditions, it's certainly within your purview to do so.
Sure. Okay. Couple of things on, on the garbage structure. Number one, it appears to be that it's roughly three times the distance of the length of Jimmy John's from the building?
Yes.
Was there a reason why that was acceptable? Is this a stretched trash structure for more of the building as well?
No, what, what was initially proposed is for the trash enclosure to be directly east of the building, and staff was concerned about that because of, there's not enough distance for viewing. The other location was chosen because that's already an existing crosswalk, there's already an existing partition, so we propose that the enclosure be located at that point rather than elsewhere within the parking lot.
And I, this will probably be a question to the applicant as well, but others may or may not use that trash structure? Do we know if that's, do we know yet if that's the case? Okay.
We've just been, they've just requested a trash enclosure. The other enclosures are located north of where it says Lot 1, in that little alcove area. That's where all of the other trash handling equipment is located for the entire shopping center.
Okay. Back into the change in traffic, you know, we provided a single pedestrian crosswalk through what is now a one-way road. I believe Shooters still has an, an entrance that accesses the side of the, of the building, but yet there's no provision for any kind of a pedestrian crossing near that building. I mean, since, since this change is taking over the entire west side of the building, it does make sense that they should be addressing that as well.
That's something that, yes.
I also believe that this entire side of the building still has the green awnings on it from the nineteen ninety-ish remodel attempt?
I believe that those, I think that they are the, the orange and blue, I believe.
Okay, so there was a change in the color?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, the, yes, the color site plan that was provided is, is not accurate in that respect. They are proposing all the, all the awnings to be the orange and blue, which is consistent with what's out there currently.
Let's see, okay. With the, the area of the current nursery structure currently being a previous paper, that product typically requires a significant amount of maintenance, specifically now that they can use it for parking. Is there anything that we have that, well, since it's, since presumably it's part of their stormwater management plan, is there anything that we have right now in terms of them maintaining that?
I am, I know that the previous pavement area was approved as part of a, an earlier plant unit development approval for the project. I believe that with that other PUD, there are some requirements for the maintenance of the previous pavement section, and regardless of the use, it would still, as you indicate, would still need that periodic maintenance, being able to vacuum up the sands, et cetera, so that it does continue to, to work.
Right. It, it requires more than just letting the rain wash it away.
Yes, yes, correct.
Commissioner Benke, and commissioners, we did research, and there is a low-impact development agreement in place currently.
Okay. And do we know if it's being followed?
Again, from a, from a, you know, standpoint of how the city tracks that and whatnot, I'm not familiar with that process, so that would have to be a question for Ryan.
Okay. Where we're, where we're increasing the green space, and the existing PUD approval allows for twenty-three point oh-eight, since we're now improving, increasing it to twenty-four twenty-four, does the PUD make that the threshold then, or are we always gonna stick to the twenty-three oh-eight, and if they wanted to come in and take some out, they're allowed to do so?
This proposal, we're, we're recommending that that, that the twenty-four become the new threshold.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Talked about the sign plan. Since we're adding the monument sign, that's essentially what the Jimmy John's monument sign is, we're adding one, correct? Is, I guess I'm a little confused on our current sign ordinance. Are they just allowed to apply for a monument sign for any particular tenant in this, in this development?
Yes, the sign ordinance currently does not have a limitation on the number of monument signs, other than all of the signage on site is limited to the percentage, the overall percentage for the site. So they, with this shopping center, they have excess sign area still available.
And the monument signs are part of our work plan still to come up, if I remember correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Is engineering staff comfortable with the lack of a certificate of survey?
Yes, I sat down with Ryan Peterson, and we looked things over, and we can visually go out and see what's there and what's not. The old survey reflects things, really, for the most part of what's there. We just want to make sure if there's any, you know, small nuances, but in that area, everything is represented, that would, would any of the impact areas is represented true on that existing survey.
Okay. And then, Deb, the second lift being eight years after the first lift of asphalt?
Yes.
Do we know why?
I'll leave that to the applicant to address for you.
Okay. Oh, I think that's what I have for you, Deb.
We'll come back at... Commissioner Singh. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Deb, well, just for clarification for me, the eastern tenant bay is the largest.
That's correct.
Okay. They're entitled to two wall signs.
Yes.
The smaller ones are also entitled to two?
The smaller ones are allowed to have one, and then the end tenants, the ordinance has set up for the end tenants.
Oh, the difference is the end tenants.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. One of the conditions listed, site deliveries for all four tenants shall be scheduled during off-peak business hours. What do we consider off-peak business hours? Or should, my, my question is, should be included in there for clarification?
If the planning commission wants to do that, I mean, generally, that's before the shopping center would open or after, just not during the standard business times. Now, Shooters, I believe, is open much later, and allowed to be open much later, so that may be something that the commission would want to add, or specify those times.
If we want to be user-friendly, I think, when you put it in, make it clear, everybody's aware of what time we're, we're talking about. So I would, I would suggest for the commission that we add the, the time, make it clear. And that's all I have, Commissioner Benke covered a couple of the questions I had, and so I don't need to. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Any other comments? Commissioner Thomas? Okay. Deb, I think at this point, we'd have the applicant come up?
Yes.
We have a, a new process, we have a, a new podium for the applicants to stand in, and I'd like to invite them to come up and speak to us at this time. Deb will stay at, at the dais, and, welcome to our new podium. Thank you. Please state your name and address.
My name is Michael Race, and I live at forty-two forty-seven Wooddale Avenue South in San Luis Park. Staff member Garros, excellent presentation, thank you very much, appreciate that. Let me just handle the, some of the easy comments first. Shooters, in a previous plant unit development application amendment, was not allowed to have any entrance or exit on the west side of the building. They have a couple of fire exits, but that's it. They can't exit or enter. You know, trash management at this property has been a bit of a challenge. We've got a large trash enclosure that exists essentially behind Family Dollar in the apex of the shopping center. That's where the majority of the trash handling ends up. That is used by a couple of restaurant tenants, Family Dollar, the thrift store, and some others. The trash enclosure is not necessarily a loading area, when you saw it in the previous picture, it's an overhead door, and it's an interior room into the, into the building. And the problems we've had with that is that we have some restaurants in this portion of the building already, and when they haul their trash around in the summertime, and that door has to remain closed in accordance with, with a previous plant unit development agreement. And the problem is, when it gets, you know, July, August, September, it gets to be ninety degrees in the building, and we put trash around in, into that room, it turns, it starts to, to develop an odor. And at the end of the Millland Textiles lease, it, it even bothers Autozone, it just needs to be outside. And so we haven't, you know, we've struggled a bit with, you know, initially, we wanted to put it directly west of where Jimmy John's would be. Out in the open air, where it would stay cooler than it did inside the building. Staff suggested that we move it down further, but what I would say to you is that the people that will be using that trash will be, you know, the laundromat, Oxbrow cleaners, all the way down through Jimmy John's. It's, it's, it's proximity to all these tenants is just that close. Do I wish we couldn't put it, if we weren't, you know, on a, on a, you know, utility right away, I wish we could have it within our property line, but we, we wouldn't have a drive aisle wide enough if that were the case. So this is just the, the best of the, you know, the best of the not very advantageous options. There were some other questions, and after those, you'll have to help me with what I can answer for you.
One of our first questions was the location of the order board for the drive-up?
Right. You know, and I, I know, I know Dan's operation pretty well, he's been with us for ten years. I will say that, and I, I eat in there all the time, I will say this, and that is that the sand, this reader board really doesn't even need to be there. The, the reader board, they can make a sandwich while you're at the window, that's how fast they are. They're faster than everybody else, and we've all seen the advertising, but they're truly that fast. You know, so the fact that the reader board is where it is, I think there's gonna be more vacant real estate between the reader board and the window than, than there will be the other direction. So, I don't know, Dan, if you would be amiable to moving the reader board, I, I don't see that that would be a problem. I will say that in, generally, in most cases, the reader board is at the end of the, of the stacking of vehicles. So that, moving it would be, would be a change for us, but I don't think it's gonna make much difference in his operation.
And I think we were just, we were trying to clarify the actual location, 'cause it wasn't on our plans.
Yeah, I, I think, if you look at the drawing, I think in the southerlymost, and I, you know, my eyes aren't what they used to be, but it's somewhere in that neighborhood, that's a transformer that's listed there, and there's some other improvements that, it's, it's in the vicinity of, of...
Could, could you give us a direction? There is the, the entrance and exit to the side of the building that gives you the back hallway that gives you access to the rest of the tenants?
Yeah.
Is it farther north?
It, it's further north.
Further north?
Yes.
Past the doubled steel doors?
Yes.
Okay.
This has got a camera here. Frank, why don't you explain?
See, that camera, so it's where the camera is, it's right here, huh? Yeah, this symbol right here
Oh.
is actually Yeah, this symbol right here is actually, let me clarify one more thing. Menu board, reader board is on the pylons. We're exchanging those regularly. But yeah, it's actually, the city requires a certain number between one and the other, the menu board and the pickup window. And this is located as the city would like it to be.
Okay.
Got it. Better location than where I thought it was.
And then we, so we covered the location of the board. We talked about, are there any further questions in reference to the trash enclosure, Commissioner Workman?
So Jimmy John's laundromat, we're going to be the primary users of that trash compartment?
Well, we have three more tenants to go. I can tell you, you know, from a tenant perspective, I've got some updates. White Chiropractic has also been a tenant of ours for eight or nine years. Currently exists between Shooters and Juniors. It's not a great place for somebody that does back adjusting and provides massages. And so, and she's very happy with being there, but she wants to improve, you know, she's through the recession. It was tough on her as well. She really wants to be next to Jimmy John's and we've got that deal done. We don't have a lease sign, but that's where White Chiropractic will be moving to. Will replace her with somebody else or divide it up between the two tenants that are on either side of her right now. We have a third tenant that will fill the rest of the space. I'm not at liberty to say who it is tonight, but I can tell you that it's somebody that you'll all recognize. It's a relocation from a neighboring community. It'll be fantastic for this community and that'll be it. And so I think this whole debate over signage, I'm a big proponent of having, you know, of course, one sign and that's the ordinance over each space. But I think what we're going to end up with is in that remaining 4,000 square feet, we're going to end up with two signs. You know, end up with one on facing 13 and the other facing east, if you will. And that'll probably be it. We're real close on that situation.
The only reason I ask about the trash enclosure is if there was already a scent attributed with it where it was. Is that something that we're going to have to be concerned about in the exterior when we get 100-plus days with food and that? I mean, for people walking by?
It isn't going to be. The problem we've had with that room is that it's not, it's not air-conditioned. And the balance of the space is. And so it tends to, it tends to multiply because there's no airflow. And so that, that's the problem we've had. We have these enclosures all over the place, built as this one's built today. At all of our, we have 350,000 square feet and 65 tenants. This trash enclosure is something that we build and use all the time. And when it's in the open air, we don't experience the situation. But when it's contained and it's able to ferment. The other thing that's going to happen here too with trash, trash is really about the frequency of pickup. And we've really had low-frequency users in that indoor trash room. And so the pickups have been once a week instead of once every other day. And so that also addresses your concern, Councilmember Workman, or Commissioner Workman. I think it's going to be fine. If it isn't, we'll pick it up every day if we have to.
Sure. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman. Commissioners, I saw Commissioner Singh's hand first. So I'm going to go with Commissioner Singh and then Commissioner Levy.
Thank you for your fairness, Mr. Chair. Staff is recommending nine conditions for this application. I'm sure you've had a chance to look up the nine. Is there any one there that will cause you, or be much concern for you, or these are things you can work with?
I'm going to answer that with an in-general response to you and say this. And with all due respect, I don't see much development going on. I'm in this neighborhood every day. Our corporate office is in the west side of this building. We are currently, we've proposed a $35 million hotel adjacent to the Viking Stadium downtown. And we're spending less time on the approvals for that building than we are on this project. And so what I would, and as I drive down 13 or Cliff Road, I don't see any development going on. And when the Hopkins House went out of business and we purchased the building from the bank and I went in to talk to the city about what they wanted to have happen there, they said to us, they said, "Well, Mike, we had 400 police calls there last year and we will let you do anything you want on a postage stamp, if you want. Any green space, anything. Just don't make it another hotel that's rented by the hour." And what I would say to you is that we just did a $3.5 million project on a 65% vacant shopping center over in Woodbury. Been vacant for 10 years, a big portion of it. And I actually, this community has conditioned me to have nightmares about green space. And so what I've done is when I'm in Woodbury and I go to Woodbury and I say, "Hey, I want to, this is what we want to do. We want to build this ramp, we do this. Are you guys concerned about green space at all?" I can't get them to talk about green space. But yet, when I'm before you folks, that's all we want to talk about. And so all I would say to you is that one of the new conditions, I don't have any problems with any of the conditions, but one of the new conditions is, you know, and if I had to do all over again, I'm not sure that I would have ever reached a PUD agreement with the city. Because in the city of Burnsville, we use the PUD process as a stick against us as developers. In other communities, they use that to encourage development, which I don't see on 13 or Cliff Road. So I get off my soapbox and I'm done with my speech. But if you want us to develop, if you want some of those buildings that are vacant, warehouse buildings, to develop along Cliff Road and Highway 13, it's probably going to take something different because you're in the middle of a building boom like I've not seen before and nothing's happening. The signage is a new one for us. I thought when we negotiated our PUD agreement with the city 10 years ago, that that's, those were going to be the conditions. If I had known that we were going to be, that the ultimate was, we need to be at 25% green space, well, hell, let's just do it. Because what happens is, is we're pushing us towards that, you know, every time we come in to do something, it's a $5,000 fee and we push this further and further and further. What I would say, I don't have any problem with the green space in this. It's minor. We're almost to the 25% that's part of the ordinance anyways. But adding the additional signage plan at this point, adding an additional condition that I didn't negotiate and agree to 10 years ago when we originally negotiated our PUD agreement with the city feels like, it doesn't feel like fair play to me. That's just the way it is. It forces us into more expense and more architecture. But if that's what you decide tonight, we'll do that. All the other conditions are fine with me.
Thank you. You know, we've heard, we've heard you. Our function here is to be fair to the applicant, to you, not to make it more difficult for you to do business in the city of Burnsville. We want to make it as easy as possible. However, there are certain ground rules that we have, within which we have to operate. I see nine conditions. That's my reason for asking. If there's one there that is causing you much concern, probably we can talk about it and get staff's input and see if we can come up with something that would be.
I'll do this project with all nine conditions. My statement is really a higher-level discussion with all of you to say, look around your community. You know, as Ann and I own an acre of land north of the Metrodome and I count like 14 tower cranes. We own a significant, significant part of the Tamarack Shopping Center over in Woodbury, Radio Drive and Tamarack Drive and several other shopping centers. And I can tell you the level of construction that I see going on right now is overwhelming. It's to the point where it's hard for us to get the pricing that we want and economically to do this. I'm not seeing that in your community. That's my message to you. So ultimately, I'll do this with these nine conditions. Would we be interested in investing a lot more in this community based on the process? Probably not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Other, Commissioner Levy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had one more question for the applicant.
Sir?
Sir?
Sir, I'm sorry. Just, I apologize. Commissioner Levy has one more question.
Jimmy John's, the chiropractic, the unnamed at this point, that's three, but there's a fourth bay. You didn't mention anything there.
You know, retail bays are typically 20 by 60. And they're 20 by 60 because that's economically what tenants can afford to pay in terms of rent, CAM and taxes. There are certain operations that need to be bigger than that. But we always design a building with those building blocks. And so when you see those tenant bays, and I think Commissioner Broderick has some experience in this because he got it best tonight. And that is that, you know, sometimes we'll have a tenant come in and they'll say, "We want two bays. We want three bays." But that doesn't mean that that tenant, that's not into perpetuity. That tenant could come and leave. So we build a building to be able, always divide down to 20 by 60. And so what we've got now is we've got basically a Jimmy John's and something a little bit more than 20 by 60 because it's an older building. And then next to them, White Chiropractic, she wants a little bit wider bay. I think it's 24, you know, by roughly 60. The building will be 64 with the corridor that you see along the backside of it. And by the way, if the city would ever like me to come in, I mean, we have a lot of retail. These are, these are things that are kind of givens in the retail business. But the last tenant that I have has spoken up and said, "We want all the remaining space." And so we would still, we want to do that. It's a long-term lease. But, you know, at some point, that space, that tenant could leave and we would want to divide that space back down to 20 by 60. And as real estate becomes more and more expensive, I see that 20 to 60, the building's pretty generally 92 feet deep and it's functionally obsolete because there's too much square footage if you divide it into a 20-foot bay. It becomes too expensive for the tenant. So this is an ideal situation for us to get a more industry-efficient bay in a very old building. And so, and economically, get us to a place where we aren't in the other spaces because they're so big.
Thank you.
You've got more than you asked for. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Race.
Mr. Race, I guess. Commissioner Benkey has one more question.
Mr. Race, I'm in the business also, so I understand a lot of what you're talking about from different, many different aspects here. I think, I think what you're talking about with this building though, is what they were trying to do 30 years ago, 20 or 25 years ago, when they tried to make the west side of the building front. And obviously, you've got a footplate, you've got a footprint here, an existing structure. That's an investment that's already there that's paid for, I assume. I mean, maybe it's a mortgage, whatever, but that's an existing building. And part of what we look at when you're coming in to renovate them is for the next 40 years. You know, and what you're doing here is awesome, okay? But I see it as such a small piece of the building. It's like, well, where's, all the way down 12th Avenue, where's, you know, I mean, some of the rest of the building has been done and redone and done again. And it never seems to be finished and then we come in and we're starting over again with, would I feel like a different look?
Thank you for that, Commissioner Benkey. Here's what I would say is that, you know, we're, the closest property that we have to this is in Eagan. It's an outlet center that's generating, you know, with CAM and taxes and rent, about $40 a square foot.
Sure.
Those kind of, if I could get those economics, I would tear the building down and rebuild it. We don't have those economics in Burnsville at the moment.
Right.
We're up against a river. That eliminates 180 degrees of our marketplace. If I had 180 degrees of a marketplace, I'd have more customers and more shoppers. And for years, what we've had is we've had people that have headed up 35W from Fairbowl and from other places. And instead of stopping at the river, they just kept right on going. We have some kind of, we have some exciting things going on right now, is what I would say to you. And that is that we now have a property that's very close to this and we have people that aren't going past the river to shop. They're actually stopping. We don't have the economics in the rest of this building to make this happen that you're talking about. Trust me, if I could make the economics happen, that I, if I could make this 7,200 square feet work at the level that we're looking at here, you'll see that in the remainder of the building. It's gentrifying before us. And it's gentrifying, I think, because shoppers are no longer passing us by. We're a legitimate stopping point for that. I think that started 10 years ago and we bought the center and we renovated it. Then the other big building block on that, on that road has been putting Tires Plus in and becoming more of a lifestyle center. I think you can appreciate that. You know, we have an abundance of traffic on 13 that is fabulous. And we're actually getting some legitimate national interest where we haven't, we haven't seen that here. So, you know, if we can get this done, I think we'll get some people looking at us. I have a couple more leases expiring in this building that are, that are great, great tenants, but the reality is they may get gentrified out. And with that additional economic success comes more ability to do this. Would it be our goal to do this same treatment across the whole property? Absolutely. We're not going to do it for $4 a square foot. It's just the bottom line.
Very good.
Anybody else? We've made the poor guy come up and down a couple of times.
I will leave this stuck, I promise.
Did we touch on the landscape company? If that's gone for good or are they relocating?
Oh, you know, that's interesting. Of course, Lenders, yeah, Lenders was there for a long time, good friends of mine, really liked them, but we all know what happened to Lenders. They didn't, they didn't make it through the recession. We were vacant for two or three or maybe even four years, probably three years after, so they weren't there for a while. We did do a deal last year with another company called Plant Place and they were reluctant to agree to sign a fixed amount for rent. So we agreed to what we thought was percentage rent based on what the lenders, what we thought the lenders' volume was. And I can tell you that we had disappointing, it was disappointing this year. Are we going to try to save them? Yes. You know, we have a nice lot that doesn't have any activity on it. You know, I don't know if they're going to be interested in being on River Hills Drive and Cliff as opposed to being on 13. You know, Ann and I wanted to do something with that piece of land for a long time. It's our green space buffer. That's why we don't sell it because at some point, we feel like you might force us to 25, okay? So that's why we keep it. But, you know, we do, we do have some tenants that are looking with us right now that we may not be able to place in the existing center. We may be back in here talking about a building or we may be, you know, trying to put Plant Place on there. But the revenue from Plant Place was not enough to justify, this is much better for the community and much better for the property.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I, this does require a public hearing, so at this point, I would like to open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item to step up and give us your thoughts. And seeing no one rushing to the new podium, I will, I hope it's not the new podium. I will close the public hearing and Commissioners, your thoughts? Commissioner Workman, you look like you want to talk first.
Well, I just want to say that I'm in support of this and I think it's a good improvement to the corner. And I think it's going to help this area launch into hopefully developing the rest of that mall. I'm excited about it, so.
Commissioner Levy?
I'm still concerned about the gas meters. And I'm not sure where that falls in, is in the permitting or is it something that we have to do? It just concerns me that they're not going to survive long-term drive-through.
I have some personal experience with if the utilities feel that it's needed or if the permitting process requires that it's be needed. I believe that's something that's left better handled by some other people in the city other than us. Anything else, Commissioner Levy? Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great project too. I'd like to see that whole south side kicked off and maybe the catalyst for the rest of the building. So appreciate the application. Look forward to your improvements. Going back to the comprehensive sign requirement versus the current PUD sign requirement that he negotiated in his last, can you clarify that?
Well, yes. Whenever you make an application, you're subject to what the current ordinance requirements are at the time. As I said earlier, this comprehensive sign requirement was only put into the ordinance here a couple of years ago. So it was not something that was required before. That's why staff is recommending it now primarily because we don't want to be the ones doling out sign space for these buildings. It should be handled by the owner of the building.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Levy, you have another question?
Does that mean that if we get a comprehensive sign plan now, the next PUD application might be subject to something different or is this one the one forever?
The ordinance says that you need a comprehensive sign plan for a multi-tenant building within five years. So it depends on when the application were to come in. If it comes in within five years, they would be under the current standard, the current comprehensive plan. If it's beyond that, then they would need to submit a revised one.
Okay. Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's interesting, you know, I'm looking at the comprehensive sign is item number five of the condition. And you look at item number nine, says, "Conditions of previously approved PUD unconditional use permits shall remain in full force and effect." They seem to be contradicting each other. We are asking the applicant to come up with a comprehensive sign plan now and then we are. are saying on number nine, that those that are approved in the, in the previous PUD, the conditions that are approved in the previous PUD are in full force and in effect.
Deb, could you just real quickly educate everyone on basically what the comprehensive sign, because we're not asking people to make any current sign changes.
That's correct.
You have a good example, maybe we could help the commissioners with where we've implemented it, one of the other properties in town? I do know we have a plan for the property that's up next.
After this, yes.
Has a comprehensive plan?
Yes, and it was not an issue for them. They can address that question.
I think we had a, do we have a comprehensive plan for the development where Chili's and Best Buy is?
Not unless there was something that came to be, like I say, since the ordinance was adopted.
Marketplace had it as part of their original PUD approval, nothing since then. They had the festive marketing going on, and that was their.
I'm, you know, so we're not asking them to change an existing sign.
No.
Basically, we're setting some guidelines where here's the maximum amount of signage, and it gives the property owner the ability to ebb and flow and maybe pull from this tenant, or which tenant wants the more space, and if they want to buy more space on the pylon sign, the landlord can certainly do that. They just can't, they have to take it from another tenant, or they have to ebb and flow that signage size, correct?
Yes, the whole purpose of, if you recall, I think some of the commissioners were here when we went through that sign ordinance, to make it more friendly and usable and to allow the owners more opportunities for signage. Well, in order to do that, we also need their input, and they're responsible for their centers also, to outline what of those options they want to have on their buildings. And that's what the comprehensive sign plan calls for. With regard to number nine, that is a standard condition. It can show up either in some of the documents, I believe it's a standard in the CUP document. I included it here. Basically, you look at all of the previous planned unit developments, and the applicable provisions come forth, and you wouldn't want to approve just this, and then shooters wouldn't have an approval to operate in the center, for example. So that's just a standard condition.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. You know, Mr. Chair, I, I asked a question earlier and gave the applicant an opportunity to address the conditions, and, you know, I gather from him that he's willing to work with staff and the city and work with these nine conditions. He prefers not to have any, and I agree with him, he prefers not to have any. But he's willing to work with staff and the city with these nine conditions. I think this is a great project. It will add much to that shopping center. I go there at least once a week. I get my meat from one of the stores there, and so I was there yesterday. So I'm fully aware of this area, and I think the four new tenants will add much to it, and I will support the application.
Commissioner Benke?
I too think it's a good improvement to this area. I too know the site well. My first job was in the grocery store that is now where the market is, or the thrift center. And I used to watch movies at this location.
Sut Trail.
Lucky Sut Trail Four. Yep, that's been a long time, that's for sure. And it's amazing to see it evolve, but that's also, I think, where some of my concerns come from, is to, to know that this building is going to be, or continue to be around for decades. And what we're doing today, well, but the economy might not allow you to tear it down, but you're right. If it does, then we have a different project to look at. But in the meantime, history shows that our buildings tend to last a lot longer than we planned. And because of that, our decisions up here tend to last a lot longer than we may think. And in this case, I think this end of the building is looking great. It would be great to see additional work in there based on additional traffic that you're getting. I have some minor concerns about traffic, but I think that they're going to be addressed just fine. I think people will figure it out. And I too think it's an improvement to the area, and it's very supportable.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I would like to move a motion.
Commissioner Singh, I would stand for a motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're very kind to me. With the chair, commissioners, moved that the planning commission recommended a city council approval of the PUD amendment for towns and country center to modify the building and site subject to the following conditions, and nine conditions as presented by staff.
They keep moved by Commissioner Singh. Do I hear a second? Moved second by Commissioner Benke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, say nay. End the motion unanimously carries. That will be, and I moved my paperwork, November 17th will be in front of the city council. Sir, I'd like to personally thank you for bringing the application to us. I think it's going to be a great addition to the, to the mall. The visibility on 13 is going to be great with this renovation. We appreciate you investing in our community. Thank you very much.
Right, see you.
Thank you. The second item, or the next item on our agenda, I lost my, the fourth item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing. Public hearing is an application for MM Burnsville Associates Limited Partnership, LLP, for a planned unit development PUD amendment to construct an Aldi grocery store in the Burnsville Plaza Shopping Center located at 1200 County Road 42. And Ms. Garros, as before, you have the floor.
Thank you, members of the planning commission and members of the audience. You have seen this subject site. Earlier this year and last year, there are a lot of things happening at the Burnhill Plaza Shopping Center. They are located north of 42 and west of Burnhaven Drive, or excuse me, Costco is directly across the street to the north. And the application, the specific application, is a planned unit development amendment. And what the applicant is proposing to do is to remove some of the smaller existing tenant space within the shopping center and to rebuild a new Aldi grocery store. And the existing site plan shows, shows us what is out there now. With regard to the discussion tonight, we're going to be discussing several things. One will be the new Aldi location, which is between the existing Sports Authority and the Performance Pool and Spas tenant space. So in this general location of the site, there are some improvements that are proposed along the north side of the site. The ordinance refers to all sides that face a street as fronts, very similar to our last application. The shopping center was built many, many years ago and has a different design plan than what the current ordinance contemplates. So there are some deviations that are needed in order to make this plan come to fruition. Earlier this summer, we looked at a planned unit development for the JL Beers building, which is currently under renovation. It's an old carpet king that's been changed to a restaurant. On the southern part of the site, we had two applications. One is the Chick-fil-A in the most southeast corner, which is currently open, and the Starbucks in this location. We'll be talking about, there's going to be some modification proposed to this part of the internal parking lot driveline. And then in addition to that, some other overall site improvements that are part of the project. As far as the planned unit development, the benefits for this are that we are looking at a new Aldi grocery store, which will be the second Aldi grocery store in Burnsville. They will be relocating from another community and building up this site. They will actually be adding 11,600-plus square feet of retail area to the shopping center site. The project is also going to include upgrading the parking lot. They're going to be adding trees to the existing medians and quite a large landscape and green space improvement on the southern part of the site between the large parking lot and Starbucks and Chick-fil-A. Site infiltration will be improved with the site, and as a matter of fact, the four rainwater gardens on site, including the one that's proposed with this project, will actually exceed our stormwater management standards for infiltration. The parking lot circulation will be improved by making that alignment change, so we'll have a straight east-west alignment here. You'll no longer have to make this little jog. And then the parking lot green space will exceed, almost doubling what the 3% requirement is as a result of the proposed project. Again, very similar to the last application, because we have an old shopping center, there are some deviations that are needed for the project to be approved as proposed. I think before I get into those, I just want to show you quickly that this is the central area of the shopping center that they're talking about renovating in this location. It's quite a long shopping center, so I do have pictures on the north, or excuse me, on the top and bottom slides, just to give you an idea of the existing conditions out there. Then Fred alone's hardware was updated here a couple of years ago, and they are on the far west side of the building. And then the north side of the building is really designed to be the back of the shopping center, but the ordinance is going to have requirements related to front because it faces a street. Obviously, because this is a, designed as the back of the shopping center, there are some deviations that are needed associated just with those provisions. Also, just want to call your attention to the trash enclosures. There are several of these trash enclosures that are being constructed, actually, I believe they're almost finished, if not finished, along the north side of the shopping center. And that was part of an earlier project, and that brings the center into conformance with that aspect of the code. The deviations that are requested for the proposed Aldi store, actually, the setback to the north front property line is proposed to be about 33 and 1/2 feet. The setback standard, again, from the front lot line to a building is 60 feet. So they're requesting that deviation to allow for a lesser setback. They're asking for an overall parking deviation for the number of parking stalls to be reduced from 734, which is the required number of stalls per the zoning ordinance for the amount of retail on the site, and they are requesting to go to 533 parking stalls. A green space deviation to allow the overall green space to be 18 as opposed to 25%. This is an existing condition, and they are actually adding some green space to the site, but it doesn't change the overall percentage. Deviation to allow screening and plantings and encroachment within the 10-foot drainage and utility easement, this is along the north lot line in this vicinity and through here. A deviation is needed for that. A deviation to allow trash handling in the proposed loading dock area, which will be on the north side of the Aldi building in this location. They're proposing to have an open trash area, and the ordinance requires a enclosed structure with a roof. And the last deviation is to allow recessed cabinet signs for Aldi, both on the south front and the north of the building, and we'll discuss that here in a couple of minutes. Excuse me, I lose my voice here. This is the overall PUD plan, if you will. What I want to call the attention of the viewers and planning commission is that there are some modifications that are proposed along the north side of the building, mostly in terms of making sure that there are curb cuts available that will provide for the loading dock area so that there can be truck movements that will be able to provide supplies for the Aldi operation. It's kind of hard to see on this particular drawing, but basically, what they are proposing to do on the south side of the building is they will be removing those tenant spaces and then rebuilding Aldi. This will come out, again, very similar to our last application, very modern-type storefront, adding a lot more glass. The exterior materials proposed will be an upgrade from existing conditions. They are proposing to add pedestrian crossings, and these are proposed to be concrete, so they do meet the ordinance. They are also proposing to modify on the south part of the site. They are doing a number of modifications, some that have been recommended by staff. We knew that green space for the shopping center is, is kind of an issue similar to the last application. Those green space standards that are in effect now were not required at the time the shopping center was built. What staff had suggested and what the applicant has done is they have really concentrated the areas of landscaping for the site. This area in through here, where they are proposing to straighten this drive aisle, there will be new parking lot islands that are created that will delineate the north side of that drive aisle. These will all be planted and landscaped and irrigated. They will create, on the south side, there's going to be entrances to the Starbucks and a specific entrance into the Chick-fil-A site, and then bordering that will be a large green space planted area in this location, and then also in this location. And this area here is where the proposed fourth rainwater garden on this property is proposed to be located. The site plan here just gives you an idea of the floor plan for the shopping center. This is the north front, and the rear of the shopping center is to the left. This would be the loading dock area and the back of the building. And what I want to draw attention to for the planning commission is that on the front of the building, there is a, a structure that's proposed to be built to house the shopping carts. And we'll look at that a little further, but that is, it's outdoor, but it will be screened and does meet the city's ordinance. We talked briefly about the changes to the parking lot and north side of the building. That is to allow for the maneuvering of trucks for loading, and then they will back in to the loading and service area and then exit the site as shown. On this particular plan, there is further detail. This is the utility plan and grading plan showing exactly how these structures will be graded and developed. This will also provide, in this green space area, they're able to create six additional parking spaces for the Starbucks site right across from the, from the building. They will also actually be proposing additional landscaping within several of the existing parking lot islands within the development. So there is an overall site improvement in addition to the significant improvement of the new Aldi building. This graphic was included in the application materials for planning commission, and it shows the area of the site where the construction will take place. These tenant spaces will be removed, and the new Aldi is shown here on the south. And what I want to draw the attention to the planning commission is that the Aldi storefront is, these changes here are only about on the western half of the structure. This is also Aldi tenant space, although it's been designed really to coordinate well with the existing, with the existing building and materials. As far as the project itself, the Aldi is a, will be a new facility, as I indicated. They are not proposing to have liquor at the facility now. There is no outdoor seating that's proposed as part of the project. They do need that setback from the north property line, that variance to allow the 33 and 1/2-foot setback as opposed to a 60-foot setback. Staff is supportive of that deviation. They have shown their truck movement, and other plans can occur in the back with the setback that is proposed. In terms of the building architecture, they are proposing parapet walls, both on the north and south sides of the building. I'm going to go to a different slide. If I can find it here. Just to give you a little bit, a little bit better idea, this is actually for the sign plan. But basically, we're looking at a mix of different materials that Aldi is proposing, and I wanted to just draw the planning commission. and I wanted to just draw the Planning Commission's attention to the materials, a proposed exterior materials board, because I think that the graphic tends to make the gray areas, which are shown in this area, it looks a little bit green, and that's not the intent. What they're proposing is, basically, there will be a gray anodized canopy, metal canopy that will be constructed. This will actually provide cover for the cart storage area, which is proposed on this location. The base units are the split face CMU, and they're in a pearl color, which looks actually more like a light, very light tan type color and matches very well with the existing shopping center. This part of the Aldi facility is proposed to be EFS, and they're carrying through the vertical and horizontal design elements within the EFS. There is one window that's proposed in this location. This is an exit door out of the facility. The main entrance to the facility will be via the doors and be more on the westerly side of the tenant space. They're proposing a series of different materials. They've got a darker brick that is located basically on the columns. That's a little more distinctive. And then they're also proposing metal panels, which are silver and light gray in color for this area and inside these two areas here. On the back of the shopping center, here we go, just go to the top one here. The back of the shopping center is currently a red type of brick material, and they are proposing to continue that similar material across the back of the, back of the building to match. They have provided the elevation drawings showing that the parapets that they'll be installing, this would be the south front, and this is the north back of the building, but the parapets will provide screening of the rooftop equipment, so they have shown that. And with the materials, what staff is recommending is the materials and the design are very nice. We believe that they will be a great addition to the shopping center and go well with the other improvements that have been made out at Burn Hill Plaza for the other tenant spaces. However, similar to other applications where we deal with color, looking at the existing shopping center being in the tans and browns, light cream type colors, staff is recommending that that color palette be maintained on the, for the building front as opposed to the gray and silver colors that are proposed for those metal panels. And that is something that will be up for discussion, I think, from the applicant and This site plan does give you a little bit better representation of the new pedestrian crossings that are proposed. They're showing two at this location. There are existing crossings that have been installed as part of the JL Beers and Chick-fil-A and Starbucks projects. These will be located right in front of the store, and they'll be able to provide for traffic going in and out of the grocery store into the main building, and then this is outside of that, that door area that I showed you earlier. In addition to that, they are installing and doing upgrades to some of the parking lot islands, and what this graphic shows are also the landscaping where they're adding trees, additional overstory and decorative trees to all of these spaces, and the parking pads, or excuse me, parking spaces will also all be irrigated. The applicant is requesting for a deviation in the total number of parking stalls for the site, and staff is supportive of the deviation. The applicant is very familiar with the parking that they have and the parking needs that they have for the shopping center, and Aldi has been around for a number of years, and they're familiar with their parking needs as well. The parking standards of the ordinance, again, were developed quite a number of years ago. And actually, we do have a goal and policies in the comprehensive plan that talk about when you have a situation where you've got a large parking area that's overparked and not used, rather than trying to provide supply for the highest peak usage day, those being around the holidays, is really to try to reduce those big areas of asphalt to the amount of parking that's needed for the daily type service. And with that, staff is supportive of the applicant's request for the parking stall deviation. We believe that they have a better handle on the needs that they have for the number of parking stalls, and we do know that it has been, much of the site has really been not utilized to its full potential for many, many years. The landscaping, we talked about briefly, and that is identified more clearly in the staff report. The applicant is meeting the 25% plant material, I'm just losing my voice here. The variety of plant materials meet that 25% diversity standard. The applicant is proposing a series of, and we talked about these two southern areas, south of the building. They're also proposing on the north side of the building, additional landscaping to help to augment what's already on the north side of the building. And then also, they're proposing a 76-foot planter wall. And that serves a couple of purposes. It serves to help provide screening of this loading area, and it also helps to provide for additional landscaping, perimeter landscaping for the building and another decorative element. It's not actually part of the face of the building, but staff believes that they have done a really nice job in providing a unique feature to improve the north appearance of the building. Let's see here, sorry. Trying to get back. This graphic shows, gives an idea of what this wall will look like, basically using the same, the same brick materials, and then there is an accent up at the top that shows up better in the screen. The planter is about 4 and 1/2 feet tall, about four feet wide, so it can accommodate larger plantings. And in addition to that, it will also provide screening of that loading area. For the loading dock itself, there is actually about a four-foot difference in elevation for the loading dock when they come out at the, at the entrance and then back in. They're actually backing down about four feet. So again, you get that additional screening just because of the change in elevations as As far as the signage that's proposed, the applicant did provide a comprehensive sign plan, which meets the ordinance standards, and they are proposing basically very limited amount of signage. There is a recessed Aldi cabinet sign that's located on the north face, and then also above the main entry at this location, and then the individual letters for food market. The overall signage amount complies with the ordinance. They're within the overall amount of sign area. The PUD deviation is requested for the cabinet signs. And what the applicant is showing is that in this graphic, these cabinets, rather than sitting on the outside of the building like a typical cabinet sign, are proposed to be recessed, so the face will be flat with the exterior of the walls. The ordinance was changed a couple of years ago, similar situation as our previous applicant, in that the ordinance was changed to allow cabinet signs, but only as a logo that is subordinate to the main signage, meaning you can have a small logo type sign, but the intent is to have the individual raised letters for the actual signage itself. The applicant is requesting for a deviation from that standard. What staff is recommending is that they be allowed to have the two cabinet signs, but that the Aldi letters themselves be raised individual letters following the ordinance In addition to the wall signs, they are proposing to replace the princess jewelry signage on the front mark with the Aldi food market sign, and that does comply with the ordinance. For the shopping center, there was a traffic study that was done. The commissioners have questions related to that. Mr. Hill Gardner can address that. There are no public sewer and water improvements that are proposed as part of this project. They are relocating some lines within the project site to accommodate and provide for the site plan and the, the loading area that is proposed. With that, the application, as we have indicated earlier, is a very nice addition, we think, to the community. The applicant has gone above and beyond the minimum standards and minimum requirements. They're not only making improvements to the shopping center, but to the entire site, and it does fit very well with the recent improvements that they've made at the site, and staff feels that this is going to be a great addition. It'll bring additional traffic to that shopping center and hopefully provide for some really nice synergy between the various businesses out there. The recommendation from staff is to approve the plan unit development, subject to the four conditions identified in the staff report, which are summarized as, condition one, would be revising the color palette to incorporate the similar brown tones, if you will, for, that are on the existing shopping center and within the PUD, as opposed to the gray colors that are shown for the metal panels. Number two, the trash handling be within an enclosed structure, meeting the ordinance. What the applicant is proposing is an open, it's hard to see. Probably this would be kind of the best representation. It doesn't show the entire loading dock, but basically, back up here, you have steps to get in to the building and the actual loading dock area. What they're proposing to do is have an open area for trash at about this location with a screening gate, and what staff is recommending is that they provide an enclosed enclosure, meeting the ordinance standards. The third condition relates to the wall signage, and that would be just that the wall signs be modified to allow the recess cabinets, but have the white Aldi letters meet the individual raised letter ordinance standards. And the fourth condition is a general condition that all of the previously approved PUDs and CUPs, those do remain in full force and effect. And with that, I know that the applicant is here, and I can stand for questions as well.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Very, very thorough presentation. Commissioners, I will start with questions. None?
Krishna Benkey.
Thank you.
You lost most of your background there. I thought you didn't have any, it was just blank.
Oh, no, no. It was, that was the traffic study. I guess, you know, just to start, I'm sort of going through the review tool. I'm struggling with exceptional as a subjective response in areas where we are losing relief. Let me back up. I think this is a great improvement to the center. With that being said, it also feels a little large for the areas. I mean, it does feel like we're tightening up things quite a bit. And when I start looking at it, I see that what they're doing is they're essentially building out to the edge at this point. They're bringing the building pretty much as far forward as they can, and they're pushing it as far back as they can. And what that, to me, is doing is it's eliminating the relief, which arguably exists, but is not optimum now. And, you know, because of that, it seems to go away from some of the things that we are trying to accomplish with our architectural review tool. You know, the fact that they're using the cart wall to be the base of the building, you know, just seems hard for me to accept that that becomes an exceptional review of that building. Some things like that, I guess. I guess where I'm trying to go with that is, you know, the ordinance allows them to more than double the space of the building within the current PUD without making that a condition that we have here. This particular tenant space. We're going from 7,000 and 8,000 square feet to, you know, 19. It's like 11,000 square foot increase.
Yeah, the ordinance allows, the ordinance allows for administrative approval. If they're expanding up to 10%, that could be approved with just a permit. However, because they need the other deviations with setbacks, et cetera, that's, you know, why we get back to the PUD amendment.
But it's 10% of the entire building.
Correct.
Right. I mean, which we're not doing. And the issue of the, the trash handling, that basically, it's just basically a staff, an ordinance that we have addressed everywhere else, including other areas of their own I guess I have more questions later.
Commissioner, any other questions? Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this would probably go back to both planning and the applicant for some clarification. That's the parking. I mean, a PUD originally had 734 spaces. We're eliminating 50 now to get down to 533. That's almost a 20-plus, that is a 20-plus percentage decrease. So, planning staff can speak to it, maybe based on the old PUD versus the current use. Obviously, the applicant has current knowledge about his tenants' needs, tenant needs, but I guess I would like a little bit more clarification on that big a reduction in parking.
Let the applicant address that for you. There is, there is a provision in the ordinance that does allow for a reduction in parking if the applicant can show that they can still, you know, adequately park their site. It does require a conditional use permit, or in this case, because it's a PUD, that's why the deviation is there for your consideration.
Well, we invite, you have another question? Okay, Commissioner Benkey.
Mr. Hill Gardner, I did notice in the traffic study that it seems like everything is based around a 95% test for stacking and things like that. Can you talk a little bit about the difference between 95% and 100%? I mean, is it a, is it a 5% increase? I doubt it. I mean, I would imagine that the percentile is probably going to jump a bit more, maybe not logarithmic, but yet it's going to jump quite a bit.
You're correct, Commissioner. For whatever reason, in the past with traffic studies, the 95th percentile has always been used. I think the fact of the matter is, they used to typically use a larger number up to 100%, but that, again, that exponential increase didn't match up with the overall numbers that you'd see, and they were using a smaller number. You used to see studies with a 75% percentile. The problem was, we were running into the situations you see out there with the current traffic market now on highways and things, that they're, they're full capacity at this point. So, the 95th percentile, in my mind, is a conservative number. That's why we feel comfortable with the, with the traffic patterns that were shown. In some cases, it may be overestimating to some degree, but it's a number that we can feel safe with versus that smaller 75th percentile number.
Right. And I guess that concern sort of goes me back to the parking, too, because it feels like we're putting the parking in at a 60th percentile deal for what is essentially a very small time of the year, the holidays, which arguably is their best time, so. I wonder the same thing. It's, we're taking so much away, but yet it's supposed to work at the worst time of the, you know, the worst time of the year for traffic on 42.
Well, and that'd be helpful for the applicant to, I mean, it's uses, it's peak times for different uses. I mean, I can only speak to what's been going on out there in my experience, but with the new tenants proposed, I guess it'd be interesting to hear from the applicant.
Right.
I guess I'd like to have the applicant come up once again to our I guess I'd like to have the applicant come up once again to our new podium. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm Justin Ling with CSM Corporation, representing the landlord. Good to see you all again.
Welcome back.
Apparently coming up here every quarter now.
Yep. That's a good thing.
Which is great. This is, you know, what are, in our minds, hopefully not the final piece, but one of the final pieces in kind of repositioning this shopping center. I could tell you that we spent a long time looking at the parking counts specifically, and how many stalls are there, sitting in cars down there, watching the parking lot at different times of the day. And given our existing tenant structure down there, I mean, there's, at any given point in time, there's probably a few hundred stalls empty at any given point in time. So, we feel like even you're displacing four tenants, you're filling it with one. I highly doubt, unless maybe on a holiday time for holiday, hopefully they're just busy, but I doubt they'll have 200 cars themselves or 200 people in their store at any given time. So, I think we're feeling pretty comfortable about it, especially given that Chick-fil-A is now open. We've seen kind of still consistent, similar amount of parking that was there before. In fact, actually less because Champs used to park a hell of a lot more, so.
If I could add to that, too, a lot of the parking spaces that are being removed are on that north part of the site where, you know, the public, for the most part, isn't going to be parking up there. So, those are excess spaces that I think we're taking a look at for removal.
Yeah, definitely true.
The main field is fairly comparable.
I frequent this mall a lot. It's near my home, and there, you know, we use a bit of the parking in front of Frat Alons and a bit of the parking in front of the Sport Place.
And Tile Shop.
But in front of here, that's, even at the peak at Christmas, there's a tremendous amount of empty spots. So, I know we've added some, you know, some changes there with the three redevelopments, but parking, from my personal experience, parking is not a concern.
Other commissioners, other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Levy?
Well, I would concur with what you, thank you, Mr. Chair, with what you're saying with the parking. I don't see these establishments being particularly seasonal, like a Burnsville Center, where there's definitely a retail seasonality. The hardware store has some seasonal, but not a great deal. I don't see the grocery store having a great deal of seasonal change in business. Restaurants, maybe a little bit, and I, too, frequent that parking lot, and it's wide-open spaces.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Commissioner Benke, you, I sensed you had something to add.
I was trying to say somebody else, too, but, yeah, I guess, I mean, I can say, I see this as an excellent use. Okay, I really do. I'm, from that standpoint of it, I'm totally in favor of it. I'm really struggling a little bit with the execution, again. How are you feeling about the color scheme issue as a condition? I mean, are you okay with recommending a change that brings this building front back in the conformance with the design framework that was established for this development?
Sure. You know, I think for most of it, they've done a good job of, and the tenant design next year, and they can also try and speak to it a little bit, but I feel like the majority of what they did, they tried to emulate and make it blend in with the rest of the shopping center while also giving it its own retail identity.
Right.
You know, I think the minor colors with the gray actually makes their sign pop a little bit more. I feel like if they were still putting some brown tones back behind it, it might get whitewashed with everything else that's there. I personally kind of tend to like to have a little bit of uniqueness without just being abrasive in your face with it.
Sure. I think everybody knows that I've come out in favor of that kind of color change in other areas.
Sure.
I think the struggle here is, it is not a significant part of the building from this face. It's a fifth or less, and the bulk of the building hasn't changed. The bulk of the building still maintains the original theme, and personally, I would love to see that theme revisited here a little bit.
Sure.
To keep it from becoming such a different, if more of the building, I mean, what you did with Frat Alon, awesome, looks great, but it maintained the fabric of the color scheme and things like that. You know, the other part of it is how the service side of the front of the building that faces the parking lot has been totally ignored. One little window in the office strikes me as an afterthought. Quite honestly, again, we're giving up recess, not pretty, but nonetheless recess, which is something that we strive for. We're ending up with a relatively flat facade. The canopy is nice, but it's minimal. The cart wall, very utilitarian, but yet it meets the letter of, hey, we've got some relief here. I guess I'm just starting, trying to see if we can, you know, get the building to pop a little more still. I mean, it feels a little underdone to me.
Sure. I think that it's reasonable to say that maybe we could put in some more glass along that eastern side of the Aldi specific space, whether the functional windows are not, had to look at their operations, but maybe we use some spandrel glass or something that could help with that.
I agree. That would be what I would have offered if I was asked. I think you do have a window pattern there that exists. I think it's important to maintain it to a degree.
Sure.
As well as the other elements of the existing building and the framework. I mean, unless you're going to propose changing the framework.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if we'll, I mean, hopefully what this does is it spurs us with an ability to maybe start maybe renovating the rest of the shopping center. I can't tell you without giving you too much information, but we've got current amortizations that are going to charge to the tenants, and the hope is, once those kind of burn off, we can do something new with the shopping center, so it's not overly burdened some on the tenants.
And we'd love to hear that, of course, because I think everything that you've done here has improved the area.
Yep, and we want to continue to keep doing it.
The issue of the trash handling structure?
I think the tenants in both CSM are okay with trying to accommodate the city's needs.
I guess the only other comment was to congratulate you on the work that you did on the south end of the parking lot. I do think that what you've done there, if I would have known about that before, some of my other concerns that were expressed earlier probably would have not happened.
Sure.
I do think that you've greatly improved that area as well, and that's nicely done.
We feel the same, yeah. And I think it'll look really nice aesthetically to everybody driving by and within the parking lot, so.
Very good.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Commissioner Workman?
I do have a small concern about an Aldi, I know this isn't part of the debate, but I do want to hear maybe from Aldi about being wedged between a Cub Foods, a Costco, and a Supertarget and being the second Aldi in Minnesota, or I'm sorry, in Burnsville. Has that ever been a concern in bringing an Aldi into this location? I mean, being tucked into an area with other supermarkets or grocery stores?
I'll let Andy Brandl with Key Representing Aldi here to address that question.
Andy, please give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Commission members. Andy Brandl with ISG 7900 International Drive, Bloomington. To answer your question, Mr. Workman, we are perfectly comfortable going between those users, given our business model. We prefer to be, I mean, I'm speaking on behalf of Aldi, but we prefer to be in high-traffic areas and close to those other uses. Given the differences between our businesses and theirs, we certainly see a place for ourselves next to those businesses.
Just put you about halfway between the one in Burnsville and the one in Savage.
We do, I do want to see Aldi succeed in this spot. I just, that was one concern about, but you know the business model in which you guys do better than I do, so I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman. Any other questions for the applicant?
I think just the ones I had.
I was going to say, I can maybe comment a little bit on yours, Mr. Benke. As far as the architectural standards, we had originally proposed taking the pilasters and the brick farther on the building to encompass our entire space, but as we've worked through iterations with staff, we've pared it back to what we have now. We would certainly be okay with taking that through the rest of the space. Our new prototypes and buildings, closest ones would be Shock B or recently remodeling Ian Prairie. We actually do carry glass across our front and that architectural standard across the front, so that's certainly something we're not opposed to. As far as the condition of the change of the metal panels, similar to what Justin said, we would prefer to keep those. We felt that it does give us our individual expression for our building, also does help with our signage there, and also maintain consistency between those other locations. Also, just aesthetically, with the metal panels, we prefer to keep them metal color. We don't want to lose some of that aesthetic, and we have some concerns that it might not look as good, given the metal panels matching as opposed to leaving them the way we have them.
Yeah, if I may.
Real quick, I want to go, but your existing facility on 13 does not have the metal panels.
That is an older, older prototype. All of our, all of the new stores have the metal panels, the higher tower in the front, and then the different materials.
Okay.
That's why I brought up the other more local stores.
I'm, again, I'm in the business, too. I mean, I get this part of it. My struggle with the prototype is that it doesn't really address the individual areas where you're in. I think they can be adapted easily. I hate to have to do, I don't, well, I need to, because Walgreens in particular has, seems to have really worked hard as a corporation to fit in differently, fit into their areas. They, you still have the image, you still have all that, but yet it tends to fit in better into the individual areas. And my direction is always going to be to look at that versus simply bringing the prototype color scheme, panels, et cetera, and just applying them to the face of a building. A little critical, I realize that, but it just always feels like you're addressing the actual area a little better by fitting in a little better. You still need to pop out. You still need to be able to show I'm here and things. So, I agree that that's part of the expression of it, but yet there's a way to, there's a way to create your presence without simply coming in with something that's different.
And that is where we have attempted to work through with city process of changing our materials to match, to better match the center. It's just the particular, you know, the particular area is the condition that we wanted to make note of was just those metal panels in the front.
Deb, can we get a picture of the colors on the wall that he's actually, or I guess it's the control room, the actual colors that you're talking about on the wall?
Guess not.
I think they're working on it.
I can.
There we go.
Yeah. Okay, so which colors specifically were you referring to? I don't know if you can see that up on your.
Which materials that we wanted to, the metal panels on the left side.
Okay.
Those were the ones that the condition, the gray and silver were the ones that the condition number one, the rest, that they wanted modified to more earth tones or similar color palette.
And are those colors shown here then, or you haven't figured out, excuse me, figured out what those might be?
What the change would be?
You're right.
We have not.
Okay.
Because our request at this time is to keep the gray and silver panels.
Okay.
I presume, then, that also the issue of the cabinet sign is that it basically is Aldi standard.
Our note there, yes, would be the fact that it is our logo. We certainly do understand, I mean, our food market letters are the individual letters, but just given that that actually is, you never just see the, A, you always see the Aldi underneath it, that we would request that we can keep the entire logo the same.
And the only way that you ever produced that or utilized it in the past is as a cabinet sign?
Yes. Yeah.
And a recess, recess cabinet sign.
Well, this one, they want to recess to sort of get around.
No, all of them, yeah, all of them now we do recessed as opposed to a cabinet sign in the front.
Okay.
That has been a change over, over the multiple iterations over the years. We've changed to recessing that sign.
And the only ones I've seen are surface mount.
Yep.
But that's to be expected, then.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant?
No.
No further discussion. So, I guess some of our questions are based around Commissioners, condition number one, where staff is looking for the revised change on the silver and gray panels. I by no means, Deb, could you, I'm sorry, Ms. Garros, could you go back to that picture of the front of the building? I, along with Commissioner Benke, I'm not looking for a condition, but the immediate right of the building, where that very small window that actually goes into the break room, and I support having glass going into the break room to give them a little more light, but I would like to see, hopefully, if you could, just to bring some glass along there. That looks very utilitarian there, and you said you might have had that, that would just simply kind of continue some of the glass from the rest of the mall to that spot. That would just be a request. I'm not looking for a condition.
I think we should, though. Actually, and, you know, if they do have a different look, perhaps they were looking for it for extending that across. I mean, if that is their standard, that I wouldn't have a problem with.
I see.
You know.
I don't.
Can you talk a little bit, Deb, about why they may have pulled back to this?
Yeah, it gets to the color, you know, because in this iteration, they've shown the color in the same, actually, EPAS treatment as the adjacent tenants.
Right.
As opposed to, again, more of the gray extended over.
Could you use your cursor instead of your pen? Because it's hard to tell what you're pointing to.
This area here, I believe that we had shown, okay, thanks, Justin. We had talked about, again, trying to deal with the color. That was basically, from a staff perspective, what we thought would be the prime issue with the project for PUD is the color change. So, in trying to address that, the applicant did modify the plan to show this with a similar EPAS color and treatments as you have further to the east.
And the applicant has a picture. Is the best way for the control room to get that on the screen is, would that be at the, there we go. I want to turn it a little bit, if you could.
90 degrees.
There you go.
There we go.
And the red here is?
It's brick.
Oh.
Okay.
I understand where you're coming from, Ms. Garros, from the standpoint of the continuance of the, of the EPAS color. I just think that little window looks kind of out of place, and I'd like to see some glass in there, at least at the height of some of the other glass on the mall. And with that being said, I'm okay with the gray.
I concur. I think it's a complementary contrast.
I'll use that for a word. I'm sorry.
Oh, sure, sorry.
No, it's okay, it's okay. I just, I'm sorry, too. I just didn't want him to walk away too quick, and I will wait.
People are always running away from us.
I will, I'll wait my turn, though. I'll have him stay there, but I'll wait my turn.
Commissioner Thomas?
I concur with you. I think the gray is, I mean, it gives it, you know, we're talking about a little pop, and I'm not an architect, but from, from a layperson's perspective, I think it's attractive, and it gives it a little bit of identity, and it's not over the top. It complements, the grays complement the other earth tones, I think, and I guess I would see, I could support the grays.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioners, I sense you want to speak.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think I agree with Commissioner Thomas. I like the gray. You know, I'm not an architect, I'm not a technical person, but as a layperson, it looks good to me. I would be. looks good to me. Obviously, the window needs to be lifted up and probably expand just to match the others, and I think everything will be okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Workman or Commissioner Levy?
We need public hearing.
I would be more amenable to the, so if we had an overall front view from Fadelone's all the way out to the far east side, to see what, now we're looking at a chunk that's kind of.
Yeah, we have that, it's on the sign plate.
There it is.
There it is, okay. All right.
It's even longer than that.
Right, right.
Commissioner Workman?
I like the earth tones. I think the window modification is good, but I like what I'm seeing in front of you right now.
Okay. Commissioner Benke?
Let's leave this one up, actually, I think. Okay, in my comments were based on this part that I saw. Okay, when I saw that with the portion of the building that has the panels and the panel and all that, and then there was this other side to it that really didn't do anything for me, that's a problem. But if that front then becomes the whole tenant space, and it's incorporated in the window patterns of the lower area go all the way across, and, you know, maybe the canopy doesn't have to, maybe, you know, again, the relief is important because we're giving it up. Yeah, I have less issue with it competing with the design framework now, because it, you're not trying to bring a little bit of it back in and butting it up against something else. You're actually addressing that whole piece.
Sure, yeah.
You know, and when you look at it from the standpoint, I think it's pretty easy to see that parts of the building don't have windows, but yet that one window that's there, I think everybody could agree that it really doesn't fit.
Yeah, I would agree with you on that.
So, yeah.
Okay, I'll do the public hearing in a while. This application does require a public hearings. Well, at this time, I would open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience that would like to come and give us their thoughts to please step up to the podium. Seeing no one rushing to the podium, I will close the public hearing. I'll try to summarize here real quick and so we can possibly get a motion. I think my understanding from the commission is that we would like to remove Condition One and replace that with, help me word this, with a continuation of the window pattern on the front of the building to?
Well, I'm going to call it the window pattern, the module, the plaster, the character of the front part of the building, but extend across the, in some fashion, not just cloning it, not just carrying it all the way down. I mean, if you want to step down on it, I don't have a problem with that either. And now I'm speaking for myself individually. From a design standpoint, I just think some of that relief vertically, horizontally is all good. It helps break up what otherwise could be read as a very flat face.
So I would stand for a motion. Commissioner Benke, would you like to, I'm sorry, Commissioner Thomas?
I would like to comment on the other conditions before.
Oh, okay.
Can we discuss the Number Three?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Yes, the sign provision. You have the floor.
I could support the signs as proposed without Condition Three.
Okay. I just, we, from a cabinet standpoint, it is a recessed fixture, so Deb, Ms. Garros, could you clarify? We would have, the facility on thirteen does have a surface mount cabinet sign, and the applicant did point out that was an older design. So we are, both the front and the back of the building is going to be a recessed sign, so it'll be flush with the wall, in the brick on the back.
Yes.
And in the front. And to the staff's perspective, they wanted the cover on that recessed sign to have the Aldi letters at a different surface?
Yeah, what we have done in other applications, and it is harder with this one because of Aldi's logo. The ordinance was changed so that logos are supposed to be subordinate to the signage, not bigger than the signage. So that's what the staff's recommendation is coming from. So what we have tried to do is to see if there's a way, in other applications, we've been able to do different metal, like as part of the backer board, they've been able to do the letters on top of that. In this case, what staff is recommending is the individual letters be raised, and that they could even, you know, reduce the size of the overall Aldi and then put, you know, Aldi in the white raised letters right below this. It's up to the planning commission. It is a recessed type of cabinet sign, which I don't believe we have other recess cabinet signs in the city.
Commissioner Singh.
I think, you know, I can support what Aldi is proposing. It's part of the logo, and just to change it up would take away from the logo, the significance of the logo. You don't want each Aldi's store have a different formation of the logo. And I mean, I will lean towards supporting them on what they are proposing.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh.
Yeah, I can appreciate that, too. I just struggle with another deviation from the ordinance and back to the reason that the ordinance is in place, which is to avoid the logo from, as Ms. Garros pointed out, to avoid the logo from dominating the signage.
I could be in support of the removing Number Three, and I do believe we've been from a, we've kind of met halfway with allowing the gray. If we could add the glass and let the sign go as is would be, would be my recommendation. Any other concerns?
I mean, I'm looking at half a dozen different signs of Aldi's here, and it does feel that we would be creating a new.
Yeah.
Pattern for them to try and make the Aldi a standalone word there.
At this point, I would stand for a motion. Commissioner Levy?
Excuse me, I'd like to make sure I understand. What are we doing with the recommendations, much specifically?
I think we would have a recommendation from someone, and I think we're, generally what I'm saying is we're going to rework, we're going to eliminate Number One or add one from a, and we're going to specifically focus on the windows. Number Two stays intact. Number Three is removed, and Number Four stays intact.
So we have, how many, how many deviations, conditions?
We have conditions, we'll have, we'll have three.
Four.
Number Three is gone, so one, two, and four.
One, two, and four.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the PUD amendment to construct a new Aldi grocery store tenant within the Burn Hill Plaza Shopping Center, subject to the following three conditions. Condition One, Two, and Four, as presented by staff.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment.
Yeah, let's, I think, because Condition, Condition One.
I'll second that.
What's that?
I'll second it.
Okay.
I would like to offer a friendly amendment.
Okay. Commissioner Benke?
That Condition One allows the applicant to work with staff to eliminate the, oh geez, to allow the pattern of the front of the building to continue across the eastern half of the structure. Not necessarily, I don't want to make it too long here. I'll give, what I want to do is I want to give staff the option to work with them on the stepping of the cornice, the layout of the plasters, you know, it should mimic the existing pattern. I don't want all this in the recommendation, I just want to give staff some direction as to where I'm going with it.
Yeah, I'm concerned what we can do and what can the applicant produce before city council, or are we going to be slowing down the process? Are we making sense, Ms. Garros, as to how these are going to be worded?
If you add the condition with the changes that you want to see, as has been discussed, I think that that could go to the city council if the applicant feels comfortable with that. Otherwise, if you want them to actually come back to you with a revised plan, or come up with a revised plan before it goes to council, that would delay them.
Yeah. Ms. Garros? It sounds like they may have had a previous elevation of this done already. Is that something you'd seen?
I think the previous elevation.
I think what they showed us was what he put up.
Yeah, with the brick, the red brick.
Oh, that's still trying to incorporate the colors differently?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
So I'd like to clarify. Go ahead, Commissioner Thomas. We do have a motion on the floor we have to get back to.
The friendly amendment goes on cut about windows. It still leaves in the condition of changing the color from the gray panels.
Oh, I hadn't. I hadn't, yeah. I would, I would remove the issue in the first condition of incorporating some similar colors to the existing center. So basically, we're going to, plans shall be revised to allow the pattern of the front of the building to continue to the east tenant line.
You're saying the applicant will work with staff to accomplish this?
Correct. Correct.
Ms. Garros, do you have any questions?
No, I believe that's clear.
Okay. Does that, Commissioners, do we have a consensus?
We have to have a consensus on the friendly motion.
Right.
Do you have a consensus on the motion?
I'm for it.
We do?
I'm for it.
Okay. So we have, we have, we have a motion, we have a friendly change, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second. We have a second by Commissioner Thomas, first person I saw. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you. This will go in front of the city council on the seventeenth, and thank you for everything you've done in the community. The fifth item on our agenda this evening is also a public hearing. The public hearing application for the city of Burnsville for a preliminary and final plat for a one lot commercial subdivision known as Burnsville Commercial Park Second Edition, and a lot width variance for property located at 1820 Highway 13 West. And once again, Ms. Garros, you've been at the dais all evening. We're going to ask you to continue to stand and present to us.
Thank you, and I think comfortable shoes are a requirement for the new council chambers addition, just saying. Sorry. Yes, we do have a public hearing. The application before you is really a result, we have several parcels that are left remaining after the County Road Five, Highway 13 interchange project. Dakota County was responsible for making the various land acquisitions and for constructing the actual interchange. There are, of the parcels out there, there is some area that is right of way, there's some area that's part of a previous lot that Sinclair was located on, there's another part, the south lot shown up here, or the south part of parcel shown up here, has never been platted before. So we've got various easements all over the place, and quite frankly, it's just kind of a mess at this point. We have the ability, the way that this agreement was put into place is that once the interchange was done, the city was to be responsible for plating it, and then the city has the option to sell the property once it's platted. So really, what we're here for this evening is to take these multiple bits and pieces and to combine them via plat into one lot for development purposes, which is shown here on the, on the actual final plat. It does need a lot width variance. The ordinance identifies lot width as being the shortest area of the lot, the shortest area that has got frontage on a public street, so that's basically along the north. We're a couple of feet short in meeting the lot area requirement, so the specific request is for a, excuse me, a variance of 3.38 feet to allow the lot width to be 146.62 feet, as opposed to the 150-foot lot width. In taking a look at the variance standards, they are a little bit different when we're dealing with a plat as opposed to the zoning ordinance, but basically what we're looking at are existing conditions. The amount of the deviation is due to the existing site conditions. It's not something that's associated with the city. It was leftover from a county project done in order to improve safety of that interchange there. So that's what the, we are looking at. The access to the site will be off of the frontage road, will not be off of Highway 13 or County Road Five, and they do provide actually additional lot area above the minimum 40,000 square feet. So there's kind of an exchange. There's a little bit more lot area available, but it is a couple feet shy of meeting the 150-foot lot width for the B4 zoning district that it's in. The city council, with this application, should it be forwarded to them with a recommendation for approval, they will need to hold a public hearing to vacate existing easements, and what's on the screen shows you what those existing easements are. Those would be vacated, or the city would give up the public's right, you know, to utilize those, deeming them not needed for any current or future public purpose, and then the easements that we do need will be platted or shown on the plat itself. With that, staff is recommending approval, subject to four conditions. One, that the 1990 conditional use permit for that Sinclair service station is deemed as void. Number two, there is a requirement for all plats to provide subdivision trees at the time, and we do see, like in the Forest Park, excuse me, the Rose Bluff Project, they provided an overall tree planting plan for the development. In this case, we don't have the tree planting plan, and rather than requiring the trees to be installed now or upfront with the development and then have no one there and have them die, what staff is recommending is to allow the four front yard subdivision trees to be planted at the time of development. Number three, that the existing drainage and utility easements that encumber the site that we just took a look at shall be vacated. And then four, that all development fees will need to be paid by the purchaser at the time that the land is sold. With that, I can stand for comments.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. I think it's important we get this done to get some, to kick some roadblocks out of the way so we can get this piece of property developed. So Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Garros, who planned the trees, the city or the purchaser?
The purchaser.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levy?
What happens to the land between now and the time that it is sold? Who's, is the city responsible for it?
The EDA owns it today.
Yes.
EDA, I'm sorry.
The Economic Development Authority.
Okay.
So it will be, once it's platted, it'll be offered for sale, and then the city council comprises the Economic Development Authority, but they would make the decision ultimately if anybody decides that they want to purchase the land as to the sale price, et cetera, that would go on with that.
Commissioner Workman?
Thank you. You had mentioned that we're not going to have any access off of Five. Is that indefinitely, or would that be subject to future?
That's definitely, they did not create the interchange improvement to allow an access too close proximity to the interchange. So it definitely will not be off of County Road Five.
Would that have imposed a constriction if somebody wanted to come and develop there?
Their access would be off the side road.
Yeah, off the front road.
Yeah. That's too close to the interchange and the stoplight for to have access to it.
Wow.
Commissioner Thomas? Oh, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, okay. Going back to that plat then, so they just need to add restrictive access on there, Brian? Probably on that west side?
I think it's already denoted. I mean, there is no access denoted on the plat. Once, the new plat, the final plat does not, does not allow access, it doesn't show for access, so.
Well, typically, we show restrictive access on the plat itself.
Okay, okay, we can modify that then.
Yeah, I mean, it's just good practice, so.
Sure, you bet. I'm representing.
I'm representing the applicant today, too, as well.
He's going to want extra, he's going to want extra money now, he's.
I'm doing double duty.
This is a public hearing, so at this point, I would like to open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience that would like to come and speak to us in reference to this application, to please come up and give us your name and information. Seeing no one rushing to the podium, I will close the public hearing, and commissioners, I would stand for a motion. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make, to make a motion that the planning commission recommended the city council approval of the lot width variance and preliminary plat of Burnsville Commercial Park Second Edition, subject to the following four conditions as stated in the staff report.
So, so moved?
So moved.
Second by Commissioner Benke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay, and the motion carries. We are five for five for five
There you go.
This evening. That takes us to, any updates, commissioners? Do you have, does anyone have an update for this evening?
Ms. Garros, do you have any updates for us? I think you do have one.
Just for, for the commissioners, we did hold eight interviews last week for the planner position. We have, there was a distinct split between basically half of the applicants being more entry level or only a couple of years of experience, to the last four, which, all of which could step in to this position today. They run from local candidates to a couple that are actually outstate, one out on the west coast and one down in Texas. So we will be, we're doing some final viewing. They're submitting information, examples of written reports, staff reports, and some presentations that we can take a look at, and then I believe that the, the position will be offered at some point, probably this week.
Thank you, Ms. Garros, and I do think you have some other notes saying about the November 23rd Planning Commission meeting.
Yes, the November 23rd Planning Commission meeting will be canceled. We will have the first meeting in December, and on that night, we do have one application in for, it's a, it will likely be a planned unit development for Green Horizons, which is a landscape company that wants to move to Burnsville to another great lot that the city just sold to them, Cliff and River Ridge, and then we'll be looking at your work plan items for 2016 as well.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you, Ms. Garros, for your time this evening. I would stand for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benke, seconded by
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay, and the motion carries. Good evening, and thanks for everyone attending this evening. Have a, have a safe drive home. Thank you.